Okay.
Right, ready to go.
Thank you. This is John Kruger, President of the Board of Trustees of the Berry District, and it is Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty P M. We'll call our meeting to order. To my knowledge, we have no public comments. Confirmed. Okay, our first piece of business is our consent agenda. And it includes the Board of Trustees' meeting minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, our income and expense year-to-date report at the end of August, two thousand twenty-two, and the executive session that was held on September first, two thousand twenty-two, for the express purpose of the annual evaluation of Library Director Claudine Perot. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, John.
Thank you, David. Is there a second? I saw Kay's hand. Thank you. Does anyone have any items they have edits to make or request to remove from the consent agenda? I see no one. So if everyone will unmute those board members, and please vote by aye if you approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Passes. So our first bit here tonight will be to welcome and be introduced to four of our new employees. Claudine, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you can have it in whichever order you wish.
Thanks, John. In quick review, and really for the record, every few years, the library board says, who are these staff people, and how do we get to know them better? And then we ask the staff, under pre-COVID conditions, to come in and meet the board and the board to meet the staff. But this year, basically because of COVID, we've used this remote process and PowerPoints. So the board, you should know that the recording we did when you did your PowerPoint was shared with all the staff, all the new staff. And so staff knows that the beginning of this year, the board and each of the four library teams met one another. But since that time, we have some new hires. So Deborah, we're gonna ask you to turn your camera on, please, so that we can all see each other's bright and shiny faces. Joanna and Cindy are the way they are because they're the way they are. But John, you asked for the sequence, and the sequence is actually in order. So I'm gonna say, please meet the new staff, and then I'm just gonna turn it over to the four of you. And I think the first person is Kirby. These are the four folks.
Hello.
Hi, Kirby.
Hi, Claudine. Do you want me to start, or you have anything else? Cool. Well, hi, everybody. My name's Kirby Hazelton, and I am delighted to be a part of the library team. I'm actually really excited because I'm not even the newest part of the library team. It's really fun. Like, I was the newest member for like, two weeks, and then all of a sudden I was a seasoned veteran. So I'm thrilled to be here. I've just passed my three-month mark. And I'm your communications and social media specialist. I know most of you from around town in various capacities, but I've lived here in Estes for just over eleven years now. My husband, Jordan, and I met here and are lucky enough to continue living here, which I know is sometimes a challenge for folks in this community. So my, I've dabbled in several things, but my primary background is in marketing. And so communications is a really exciting field for me. I'm really enjoying the challenge and the fun of being part of this team and focusing on how we engage with our constituents. So obviously Curtis Kelly had laid an incredibly strong foundation. I've been honored to assume his role and learn from all of the great work he did. And I'm headed into kind of what Claudine and I would like to do, moving in this new direction. So we're really excited about some new ideas and plans while holding on to the very, you know, strong structure that Curtis has built. So you can see my essential duty breakdown. I'm happy to answer any questions about the work that is that I do or am doing, or I'm excited about doing. And my three icons on the right, the top one is my mountain scene. I love, love, love to hike and backpack and be in the mountains. Alpine lakes are my favorite. I'll take a good summit, but an Alpine lake is always where I love to be. Big animal lover. I volunteer for a dog rescue in Boulder. I have two rescues of my own. Conveniently, right around the time that I started, I was fostering two puppies, which was a terrible decision, my personal choices. But I love animals, and those two have both since been adopted, so we're in a much more peaceful place. And then my third icon is travel. I really particularly enjoy international travel, but anywhere that I can explore new places, that lights me up inside. So I'm honored to be a part of the team, excited to be here, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you. Thank you for serving in your capacities. We have a great, great Board of Trustees, and it's a pleasure to be a part of the team. Thanks.
Thank you, Kirby. I had the opportunity to work with Kirby on one communication that went out when Claudine was out on vacation, so, and really happy to have you with us. So next is Barbara Jo.
Everyone, thank you for having me tonight. A pleasure to virtually meet you all. I can't wait to meet you in person. I'd like to echo a lot of Kirby's sentiments. I've been with the team since July of this year in the Technology Arts Librarian position. Really honored to have this role. The team is amazing. I am so grateful. I've been in the community over eleven years now, and just having witnessed the work the library does, it's a real honor to be a part of it now. I spend most of my time in the maker space, but also help with life skills. And I'm really enjoying the role in helping the community develop whatever it is they bring into the maker space. It's really, it's really an honor and a thrill of mine to put my background with technology and love of the arts together in one place. So I'm really grateful for the position. My icons are fishing. I live here in Estes with my husband, who's been a five-fishing guide for the past nine years. And that's what brought us to Estes. He has transitioned into real estate, and we also have a young son. So we spend a lot of our time out in the woods, fishing, hiking, exploring. Another passion is also pottery and the arts. So you'll see some hands throwing on the side. Helping others is a really big thing of mine, so you'll see the other icon of people helping each other up the mountain. That's, we are very mountain strong up here, and I really cherish the community for that. And the fourth icon is technology. So I spent over eight years in various capacities of the town of Estes Park, but my last role was in information technology. So I really have a strong background in that as well. Really happy to be here and happy to answer any questions.
My first question is, how do you pronounce your last name?
Great question. It's Greek, so if that helps it make sense, it's Limiatis.
Limiatis. Thank you. It's nice to have you with us, and I hope that things are going well in the maker space.
They are. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Janet, you're up.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having me come to the meeting, and I'm the oldest new person here today. Age-wise, too, actually, if you ever think about it. But yeah, it started April eleventh, and really like what I'm doing. I'm actually helping Cindy Sackman with accounting duties. A lot of what we've been developing is this, the dual-control type of thing. You know, just making sure that we've got everything in order the best we can. And so there's that side of it. And then what you'll see, too, is the other side of it is, on my job, is facilities and operations. And so that gives me the opportunity to work with Claudine, and she and I are figuring this out. So, you know, but it's a good challenge on that. And there's things in my background that tie into this, but I think really more of it's, it's more of a learning curve on this side of the coin, but it's, it's good. And, you know, basically, my background before I came to the library was at American Funds for twenty years in risk management. And so, you know, it ties into the accounting, definitely. Then I've got, I have been an administrative assistant in the past, too. So that was more the facility side of the picture. So that's that. And my husband and my kids have lived here a little over seven years in Estes Park. So it's really fun to be able to hike with my husband. You know, if you look at my icons, you'll see that, you know, obviously, I've got a hiking one. My husband and I do like to hike as much as we can. And then I do like to sew, whether on, you know, hand sewing or sewing on a machine. So do a little bit of that. I've been able to do a little bit more in the last couple of years than I had been because I'm not driving so far, because I had been driving to Fort Collins. And I do like to grow flowers in my containers on my patio. Someday, I hope to have a yard to do that in, but right now, that's what I'm doing. And then, obviously, library is one of my favorite places to go because I like to read. So those are, you know, things that I like to do. Then a little bit more about me. My husband and I will have been married forty-two years next month. And my husband, he's Denver Seminary graduate, as well as an Air Force Air Force Academy graduate. So got a lot of background in a lot of different kinds of things. And then I've got two children that are currently living. Youngest is my son Seth. He's getting his master's in mechanical engineering at CSU. He got a fully-paid scholarship and a stipend, so we're excited about that. And then my daughter Sarah works out at the Y, Y M C A as a front desk manager at the administrative building, and she's worked there four and a half years. And then we did have a daughter with Down Syndrome that died last October. So that's been an adjustment in our lives, but that's basically me. So any questions you have?
Thank you, Janet. Anyone have any questions right now? We'll have a chance at the very end, too. I also had a chance to work with Janet several times, signing checks and looking over some of the books as far as expenditures while Claudine was out. Appreciate all that she's doing. Nice to have you here. Next is Deborah.
Okay, I think I unmuted myself.
Yes, you are unmuted.
Okay. I've been working at the library since August the first, and Barbara Jo and I have got to know each other very well because I seem to show up in the maker space all the time. But that is such a creative place. But I started working at the library because I, I'm a writer, and I love to read. I just, I'm a consumer of words. I love words. As you can see, this is only a section of my library behind me. This is part of my writing reference library. And so I thought, what a better place to be able to get my hands on more books and to see what books are coming in and going out, what people are reading, what people are interested in, than work at a library. And so I applied, and before I knew it, there I was. And like I said, I've always been in the library, you know, reading. I have my own personal library, which is kind of humorous, but anyway, that's another story, another time. But I have been writing and publishing since nineteen eighty-three. And my friends actually keep track of how many books I publish, more so than I do. I was at a conference one time speaking, and I got up and I said, well, I've had thirteen books published so far. And my friend was in the back waving her arm like crazy, and I was like, yes, Allison, what would you like? And she said, no, you've actually had seventeen books published. I said, thank you. So anyway, I just love books. I love everything about books. And I love, I enjoy so much seeing the little kids come and get their books. You know, they carry these big piles up, and then they shove them up on the desk for, to check out. And this one little guy, he's so cute. His name is Joe. And his mom tells me that every time that they walk in and he sees me, he goes, oh, we have to go talk to her because she's my favorite. So I really enjoy interacting with the little kids and, you know, seeing what they like to read and encouraging them. And, you know, telling them what a good job they're doing with their reading and all that kind of stuff. My icons on the side, I've lived in Estes for twenty-one years and have always enjoyed hiking, of course, reading, writing. And then I also like to knit and crochet. Before I worked at the library, started working at the library, I worked at the hospital for eleven years in the emergency department. So this is a big change, working at the library. No more, no more emergency things happening where you have to take care of it right then, or somebody dies. And so that's kind of nice to, you know, know that, you know, things can be fixed, and nobody's gonna die on me. So anyway, I appreciate everything that everybody does at the library. The comments that I have gotten working the desk have just been incredible. I mean, people come in from out of town and they go, wow, what a library. This is, there's nothing like this. And there was one young man from Poland. He came up and he was just doing a tour with his girlfriend through the library. And he was up on the second floor. I was manning the station on the second floor. And he said, this is better than university. It's better than university. And I said, well, I'm glad you think that. I said, come back and enjoy our services. So I'm just really proud to be part of this library that is making such a big impact, I think, not only on our community, but on the world, when people come in and see it and see what a great place we have. So.
Deborah, what do you like to write about?
Um, I write fiction and nonfiction so far. I tell people that when New York wants something fast, they come to me because I, I think analytically. And so I think in steps, and so when they throw a project at me, that's what I go after. But I have written articles, over thousands of articles since nineteen eighty-three, when I started writing, and then plus my books. And currently, I'm working on a memoir and a mystery book. So I'm hoping to get away from, I've written some fiction, but mostly what I've written is fiction, is nonfiction. And I want to get away from that and get more into fiction.
Ever do any children's books?
Um, I have, it's kind of funny that you ask. I have done some children's books, and it came out as a, as a poem in a book, in a, a review. And it was called Red Dirt Review. And so I've been thinking about pulling that out and sending it to some publishers I know up in New York and just see what happens. I mean, the market's always changing. The publishing field's always changing. It's always in flux. So, but I enjoy writing. I tell people that I could not write no more than I could not breathe. It's just such a part of me. I mean, words are my life. My very first book that I read was Call of the Wild, and Jack London is still one of my love writers, so.
Okay. Yeah. Any, any other board members have questions for any of the staff? No? So I always like to let the staff know. I'm sure Claudine does that as well, that you're always welcome. Our meetings are open, public, and you're part of the public as well as staff. And so you're always welcome to join us at any time. And we appreciate the work and efforts you do there at the library to help make us such an outstanding organization. Claudine, anything? Finish up?
Sure. I mean, not to put the staff on the spot, but did you have any questions for the board members?
No, certainly.
I just think you're doing a good job.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks, Janet. Are you gonna tell them the part, John, where they're also welcome to stay, or they're also welcome to the place?
I figured you'd say that.
There are no, there's no right answer. Please do what you will. Yeah.
Yeah, but this is probably your time off from work, and we certainly understand if you don't want to continue with us tonight. Thank you so much, all four of you, for with us tonight. It's good to get to know you, and hopefully we'll do that in person soon.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, we will move then to Government Affairs, our strategic discussions and reports, Government Affairs Committee. First off, I want to share, as I told you I would, after the executive session, I had a review with Claudine of the performance review that we did. And she accepted it graciously. And we had a very good discussion. One of the things that has come out of some of that discussion is her desire for us to establish some specific goals for her for the coming year. Government Affairs will try to initiate that and share that. If any board members have any specifics, and she's really looking for very specific kind of objectives versus the general strategic objectives and goals that we have for the entire library.
In addition.
In addition to that, yeah. Okay. And so Claudine, I was gonna give you a chance to respond any way you'd like to, with regard to the review.
Well, I wanted to thank you for not canceling my contract. I think it'd be the first place to start and continuing my employment with the library. It's a job I enjoy very much, and I enjoy working with everybody here very much. I wanted to say, John, my, also my appreciation for the board to try out kind of the new appraisal process that Joanna really is instrumental in creating for the whole staff and applying it to me with you, so that you can kind of see how things are managed throughout the whole organization. The way in which you, I asked for more specifics, please know that's an iterative process, John, and it's a collaborative process, is the way we've done it with the staff. So the people who report to me, we, we agree on what the outcomes are going to be for their performance, right? We're looking for outcome-based performance measures, and that's my request to the board is, I want to make sure that, I mean, we used as an example, the roofing project is extremely concrete. That's an important outcome, and I would actually put it on my performance plan. But we're also looking at certain increases in use or higher qualitative reviews from the public. So we'll talk more about that, but again, thank you all. I think I am the luckiest librarian in the world.
Thank you, Claudine.
If we have a question, do you want us to go through John first or through the board?
John and Lynn. Yeah, I guess actually just John, so it's two of you only.
Right. Yeah, share with, share with me if you have any thoughts on very specifics for goals, objectives for her this next year. And we'll work on those, to have those by December. Okay. Lynn, I was gonna give you a chance, if you had anything from Government Affairs that you wanted to share tonight? You're muted.
Nothing, nothing that I can think of. I was going to bring up those, those objectives if, if you hadn't, but you've covered that very well. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. The other thing I want to share with everyone right now, and we'll talk about it with upcoming meetings, but we do want to start meeting in person again. And so the October study session will be our first to meet in person. We will hopefully not need to do a kind of a combined in-person and online meeting. But if a number of people are not able, we will try to accommodate that. So, starting in, yes.
Yeah, finish your thought. I just thought of something else.
Okay, starting with October study session, we will meet in the Handeus Room the rest of this year unless something comes up to divert us from that. And that's October sixth, so in person. Yes, Lynn?
Sorry, I should have thought of this before. One of the things that we did talk about at Government Affairs was setting up a task force to support Claudine in relation to facilities management things, things like the roof and some of those other, other issues. So if anyone has interest, experience, a burning desire to put new roofs on libraries, let one of us know, so we can start to put that task force together with people who really want to be there.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for us from anyone? Okay, next up is Kay Weston with an update on the Community Needs Assessment. You're muted, Kay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And Lynn, Claudine, if I missed something, jump right in. It's progressing well. In this last meeting, two things that I heard that I'm really excited about. First is, we have numbers that the consultant says are adequate to give us a viable analysis, which is huge. But the, the news that I heard that I got really excited in this last week, we had a hundred and forty responses, which is pretty amazing, not being the first week. Usually, as the time progresses, you get fewer and fewer. So I thought that was huge. Most of the responses have come from the library's newsletter. And then the next is in equal amounts, the library's social media and our partners. And we believe that some of the partners are just getting it out in either their newsletters or their methods, so we should hear more. We have suggested dates for our focus groups at the end of September and October. Looks like, based on responses, we're gonna have two focus groups. We have the ability to have a third one if, again, we get more interest or more numbers. And I think those are the key things. Claudine, am I missing anything?
No, I think those are the highlights, Kay.
Yeah, okay.
Does it look like we'll be able to have an initial review of this for our December study session? Since we don't have the executive session?
The dates still are favorable for that, yes.
Great. Look forward to it. Anyone have any other questions for Kay or Lynn? Nope.
I have a, yes. Oh, sorry. My internet's a little wonky today. I am curious, how many, how many responses have there been?
Um, let me think. We have approximately three, about five hundred and fifty.
That's good.
That's fantastic.
Very good. Yeah, good work.
Yeah, very excited.
Anyone else? Don't want to cut anybody off. Okay, thank you again for that, and we'll look forward to that initial review and then the use of that early next year and working on new strategic goals. Okay. Finance Committee, Treasurer Hempel, anything?
John, not a, not a huge amount. Ongoing budget processes is in progress and looks to be on time. We did discuss a little bit about the logistics when you and Lynn are gone for that first public meeting about my turning the meeting over to myself for that.
Oh, Lynn, are you gonna be gone for November study session? Oh, you are? Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
No, we'll, we'll work that out. No, we'll, we'll work that out. And being a study session, it should be no problem. So, anyway, not a lot to report there. Minor discussion on contact from the Stevo Library who wanted to initiate a discussion of optional financial instruments, getting out of the color, color trust type thing. But if you saw the tremendous increase back in the color, color trust percentage return, it's really been looking good lately. And that shows in the numbers already this year of interest received, so. But other than that, not much I can add. Okay, anything missing?
No.
Yeah. Other than that, we had some other fun discussions, but it's probably not pertinent tonight.
Okay, so the study session does not technically require a quorum since it's not an official action item meeting, but I hope the rest of the board will be able to be present at that November study session. And that's one of the reasons we're going to come back in person is I think it's important during those public hearings to have it available for people to show up and make any comments that they might want to. Yes, Lynn?
I was just going to say, I have a flight back that afternoon. If everything is perfect, I may be able to be there, but we know we can't count on that space.
No, not necessarily. I fly, actually fly out that day, I believe, so. Okay, we'll make it happen best possible, I'm sure. Thank you, Finance Committee. Library Director, your report. Claudine. You're frozen. Okay. Well, let's just look at it, and hopefully Claudine will get unfrozen soon. Or maybe Joanna would like to come online and share about the family program, because I think you've been involved in that, Joanna?
I think Cindy knows a lot more about that than I do, so may I differ from Cindy?
Yes, my, my mistake. Cindy? Can you tell us a little bit more? Give us a update on that. Thanks.
Hi, sure. It's moving a little slowly. The town did, they had promised they were going to bring somebody in and have some sessions and include us, and it didn't quite go as well as planned. We really didn't have a lot of notice. We got notice on Monday, and the sessions were on Thursday of the same week. I was actually out on that day, so Janet did attend for me and took notes. And we only had a couple of others, a couple of other staff attend. From what I heard from the town HR, it was not very robust. They, the, they went through American Fidelity, which is one of the insurance companies that provides our health benefits, and Emily said they were actually disappointed. It was not very robust. It didn't go into enough detail. It didn't say anything more than the website says, and so, and since we hardly had anybody attend, I'm still going to work on a staff survey. I met with Joanna and Claudine today with my four-page write-up that they're going to help me condense down into something much more manageable and a way to present to the staff to give them all the information they need to give us the feedback we need in order to make any recommendation going forward. So.
Okay, thank you for that update. We do, board need to make a decision before the end of the year, I believe.
Yes, we do.
Because it has to be in effect in January.
January 1, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on the family? Short-term disability plan? Okay. Thank you. So Claudine, you're back with us. You want to share about the, the rest of your report?
You bet. Thanks. Cindy, I'm sorry that I I lost my connection in the middle of, between you and David, but I wanted to thank Cindy, if she didn't mention, it's in her report, but the Roth option, the 401K plan, and the, the option of the Para 457 plan, these are retention tools that Cindy has very much alone made possible for the staff, and you'll be pleased to know that the staff is really, what we're hearing is a number of staff saying that the benefits here have been robust enough that it is one of the reasons they, they appreciate this job. So my thanks to Cindy, who did not have to go the extra mile in meeting one-on-one with interested staff members, but she has. So thank you, Cindy, very much for being an accountant who cares about the financial security of our staff. So just a little bit more about that little paragraph she put in, into her report. In terms of mine, really, I was just bragging the software project. I get no credit. I just got to put it in my report. That was the hard work of Shelley Tressel, who has been, we joke, is almost like a, almost like an adjunct staff member. We contract with her every year, and she does great work for us, but it wouldn't be possible without Joanna and Cindy. But all of this is just, this is the progress. I'm hoping that you'll notice like, wow, look at all the good things we're doing. Oh, yeah, these little things about the library policies and the facilities, which are behind schedule, but look, the software is on schedule. That was my shameless effort to make sure you saw that some things are in motion. Not much to say about the first business, because it's complete. It was easy to report. The policies, we're actually going to have a whole bunch at the end. And there are, in fact, there will again be something in the queue for January. We talked about the safe child policy, but I'll be meeting with Ann and Pete on that, but this is the sequence by which you'll, you'll likely receive these policy sets. All of them are updates, except for one. There is only one new policy in this group, which I wish I'd highlighted, but I can verbally now, and that's the video recording policy. So that's brand new, and I already got really a great draft from Kirby on that, because it is about how marketing, we handle marketing internally and what we allow externally. So that's the library policy update I can answer. And then the facility update is actually quite complex, and I made it as simple as I can. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the roof and how the hail also delayed our siding, restaining, and even the metal painting, because the hail damaged all of them. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern as we work things out with our insurance broker. But may I open the floor? I think that might be.
Yes.
Oh, and then the big one, John, is when we get to action items, a little bit of detail about the lodging tax extension, but if I may, can we focus on the operations? And then we can talk about that during action items.
Yep, you bet.
Thanks.
So anyone have any comments or questions for Claudine with regard to her report? I have a question with regard to the two software projects, with these additional costs that we had or had not considered in the budget.
They were, they were budgeted for, and Shelley's time was budgeted for, and these two bits of software were as well. I would need to ask Cindy whether they were remarkable, that the impact was different than what we anticipated. I think, I think they're right on target.
I think they're right on target. The accounting one, it might be a little bit less. But no, I, we're, we're really still good for the 2022 budget, right in there.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have anything else? So we have a busy few months coming up with policies, at least. So I will be here for all the regular board meetings, and just missing the November study session is all I, I will be missing. Okay. No questions? Friends and Foundation, Sarah, welcome.
Thank you. I want to extend an invitation to everybody for our annual membership meeting, which will take place on September 30th at the library, after the library has closed on Friday night. So we'll start at 6:00 PM, and we're doing a little bit of a different format this year. In the past, we've always had a local author, and it's gone very well. Unfortunately, we've had to cancel that local author, of course, for the past two years because of COVID. And so when we were planning at the beginning of the year, we thought, you know, we're not going to take that COVID risk again. We're going to try something a little different. And so far with the response from our different format, people are excited. What we're going to do is we're asking all of our members to come with, or let me know ahead of time, their favorite book that they read in 2022. It does not have to be published in 2022, but just a book they enjoyed. And our membership, I, I think we might have finally tackled what our members are really looking for as a benefit to their membership. The folks who responded, anyway, are excited to see what other library lovers are reading in the community. So we'll gather that information and we'll share it back as a benefit for next year's membership. I really hope you all can make it. Please shoot me an email, of course, with your favorite book. Even if you can't make the meeting, we, we really want to represent you and, and let us know what you're reading. And I'll take any questions on our short report as well.
Okay, very good. Any questions? I understand you meeting this morning.
We, we did. We invited three new board members to join us. They all were elected this morning. Lynn, thank you very much for joining us. And we have one, one more who will be joining us, hopefully with an email vote this week. So we will have a complete board of 11 going into our September 30th annual membership meeting.
Great. Do you, do you want to share the names of the ones that were voted on?
Sure, absolutely. So Maggie Kotru and Carol Whiteknack and John Wolf were elected this morning.
Two of those, yeah, two of those are mine. Okay, and was there an election of officers yet or not yet?
Not yet, but we do plan to do that at our December 6th meeting.
Okay, great.
Start the new year off.
Very good. Anyone have any comments or questions for Sarah?
Any roof questions? And by, I, I really, it's an interesting process, and I, a, a task force is definitely needed. I paid for.
Yeah, well, your, your roof is just a little bit smaller than the library's.
Absolutely.
You know, it, I, it felt, Sarah, like a very productive meeting. There were a lot of ideas generated and excitement about trying some new things, and that was, that was great to hear.
Oh, thank you, Lynn. There definitely was a lot of library love in the room. It was, I loved the enthusiasm. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you again. If there's no other. We will move to our action item. If I could find it, what did I do with it? There it is. Okay, I will read this resolution and ask for a motion and second. And then if there will be opportunity for discussion, and I think Claudine has some that she'd like to share. So this resolution is entitled "In Support of the Estes Park Local Marketing District Lodging Tax Extension Ballot Issue." Whereas the Estes Valley Public Library District adheres to the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act, which expressly authorizes local governments to adopt and distribute in normal fashion a resolution regarding any ballot issue of import to that local government. And whereas the Estes Valley Public Library District has experienced significant workforce and patron service impact due to attainable housing and/or childcare in relation to hiring very staff. And whereas, the intent is to use the funds from this measure, quote, "to the maximum extent permitted by the Colorado Revised Statutes as amended for construction or purchase of workforce housing or the purchase of land to provide sites for workforce housing, development and operation of programs to support workforce access to affordable housing, and development and operation of programs to support affordable workforce childcare services. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Estes Valley Public Library District as follows. One, board support. The board supports the Estes Park Local Marketing District ballot issue, which proposes to increase the lodging tax by 3.5% and the implementation of that tax via transfer to the town of Estes Park for the express purposes of increasing workforce housing and workforce childcare. Two, public support. The board urges electors of the district to join in its support by voting yes on Estes Park Local Marketing District ballot issue in the November 2022 election. So I have a motion to approve. Move this motion. Pete, is that your hand in motion? You're muted.
Yeah, I move to that we approve this.
Resolution. All right. Thank you. Pete moves. Is there a second?
I would second.
Beth seconds. Thank you. We are open for discussion. Claudine, you want to share your discussion?
Just waiting. This, thank you to the Government Affairs for entertaining this resolution. This is, as you can see in the notes above, are, so this, you, you're probably all familiar with House Bill 22-1117. It passed in March, and just as a gentle reminder, it allows all the local marketing districts in the state to be able to redirect their existing revenue for workforce housing and childcare, or to increase the taxes that they collect. So we're not the first community to approach this. I don't know the exact number. And I actually went to go look, and I was able to find it, but I will deliver it to you because I think it's of interest. The folks at our, the Tax You Don't Pay, which is what ours is called in Estes Park, the, the ballot, the group, other communities have gone as much as 6%, have asked for a 6% increase. And what we're doing in Estes Park, and I'm not a part of it directly, is 3.5%. That's what it said. I brought it to your attention because A, I think we have as a library and you as a board been spending considerable time figuring out what we're, what are our duties, our opportunities to retain and our workforce in order to provide the services that the community pays us to provide. So this is my, this is one thing a board can do, right, is to make a resolution and support. The only time in my memory, but Sarah, yours is better than mine, the only time in my memory that the board has taken action on supporting a ballot initiative, initiative other than our own was when the REC district was building the community center, and we, we had a skin in that game, so a resolution was passed. So I, to me, this is just a, a draft where you as a board can discuss whether this is of interest to you. Does it or does it not serve the interests of the library? If it does not, that is, that's your conclusion. My proposal is that it does, and I would appreciate your consideration and, and discussion. So thanks, John. That's my.
Thank you, Claudine. Thank you. Pete, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't. Well, I actually had more of a question. Where can we go, Claudine, to read about how the revenue will be spent? I mean, what are the strategies, or is it too early for that?
You mean in specifics or the generalities? Because what I tried to include in the resolution does cover the intent.
Yeah, the intent, I was, yeah, I was, I was actually wondering if there was anything more specific than that, in terms of what their tactics were going to be.
Well, I, I It's an incredibly fair question. And I, I put in the, the director's report, the four main links that I have available, and I don't think it answers that, Peter. Yeah, I think, um, I'm going to, if you were, if you went to the original document, uh, then you were able to click on those links. If you went to the PDF, you were not. So I'm going to see if I can drop those in the chat so that you can have it. And I can certainly email it to you, uh, the board. Let me see if it'll. But I don't have the answer. No, it doesn't. Let me, um, let me send that to you as an email.
That'd be great.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Yeah, I don't think the town has developed, uh, the specifics behind that in total by any means. One, uh, item that I'm very aware of is out here at Fish Hatchery Road. Uh, it's, uh, town property and are, I don't, I haven't seen it, although I haven't been at all the town board meetings. I haven't seen that they've had, uh, considered those that property. That may have happened this last month. Uh, but that was the first thing to do. Can you still hear me? It says my internet connection is unstable.
Yes. Can hear you.
Um, so, uh, that's workforce housing, 190 units, and I would suspect that of this, uh, and early collections and the, the collections in 2023 probably would be focused on that, uh, particular project, and then additional projects would be uh, forthwith. Um, but they haven't identified any others that I'm aware of. Although the property on, um, Highway 7 across from the golf course, kind of, um, that some of that is intended to be, and I'm not sure how much town investment would have to go into that versus the developer being required. Any other comments or questions about this? Does anyone have any amendments? Yeah.
Uh, Claudine, uh, if the board adopts such a proposal, where's it broadcast at?
Uh, the furthest we've sent it, uh, David, is we put it on our website and we have for the, I believe for the community center, we did send it to the paper as part of a press release. And that's as far as we went.
It would, uh, specifically go back to the marketing district uh, that we have made this, and then they would be able to advertise it as such. Um, if there's any concern about us putting it in our newsletter or otherwise, that's not expressed in the resolution and we can discuss that.
No, there was no concern. I was just curious, uh, if it went further than this meeting.
Yes, it does, is the answer. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, uh, the very least, it, it will go to the marketing district that we've passed it, if we do pass it. Or if we don't pass it, we'll let them know also.
John, I do have a, a very small edit, which I apologize for since I had a crack at this before through Government Affairs, but in the second whereas paragraph, um, I, I wonder if we should be saying instead of due to attainable housing or childcare, we should be saying due to shortages of affordable housing or childcare or limited attainable housing.
Okay, if you want to make an amendment to it, you need to make that as such and be specific, please.
Okay, um, in that second whereas parag- paragraph sentence.
Yes.
Um, to add after due to the phrase shortages of, and then continue with attainable housing.
Okay, so that you're making that amendment motion. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Pete seconds, okay. Any discussion around the amendment?
It's an improvement. Thanks, Lynn.
Makes it clear, yeah.
Okay. Uh, if there's no questions or co- further comments about the amendment, we'll take the vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amended wording and the second whereas? Unmute, please say aye if you approve.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none? Okay. The entire amended motion is now before you. Any further discussion or comments? Concerns?
John and Claudine, do I remember correctly that if we wanted more time to study those links that Claudine sent, we could put this off a month?
Uh, it is a formal motion before us and, uh, anyone can make a motion to table it to a future meeting. But it's before us right now.
Lynn, the, the, if I may, thank you, Robert's Rules, John Kruger. That is absolutely affirmed. And Lynn, uh, yes, if it was, if that was the pleasure of the board, uh, there would be time before the November election because you would have the month of October to re, to consider. You can get it done now, you can get it done later.
So you have a motion, amended motion before you. Are you ready to vote? Does anyone have any other amendments? I don't see anyone seeking. So if that's the case, we will take a vote on it. Again, if you're on mute and vote aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would note that I believe there was a abstention in the vote. But we have a majority voting in favor. It has passed. Thank you very much. Okay, um, that's all of the business that's on our agenda unless you have any new business that we did not have on the agenda. Anyone? Well. Okay, upcoming meetings, we, as mentioned earlier, we will meet in person on Thursday, October the 6th, 6:30 PM in the Handiess Room. And that will be, uh, the presentation of the draft budget and discussion direction-wise, uh, by Claudine and presumed Cindy and the Finance Committee. Our regular October meeting will be Monday, October 17th at 6:30 in the Handiess Room. Um, and that will be where the board will accept that, uh, draft budget. And, uh, hopefully we will have at least one policy set to consider at that time. Anyone have anything else? Remind uh, Sarah's invitation to the September 30th Friends and Foundation Annual Meeting. I plan to be there. I've already sent in my book. Everyone be safe and hu- healthy. And, uh, it is now 7:28 PM. And I will call the meeting adjourned.